Well, call this meeting to order, please stand to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Polly.
President.
Trustee Lappin.
Here.
Clerk Colavich here. Treasurer Ellison else?
She's absent, but she is watching online.
So, excused. Trustee Crawl.
Here.
Trustee Reiner.
Here.
Supervisor Skibby.
Here.
Moving forward to the adoption of the agenda, are there any additions, corrections? There was a last moment addition, which was new item business eight that was emailed.
But it was on here.
It was, it was on there. We didn't have. So, the difference was from the old one was just a slight increase with cost in terms of that. But are there any other additions, corrections, substitutions to the agenda as presented? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So, move.
Supported.
Moved and supported. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed to say. Moving forward to, this is the first opportunity for public comment. If there is any public comment online or in the, in person, please stand to the podium, state only your name for the record. Otherwise, online, is there any public comment? And Laura, if you'd like to address the board, this would be your opportunity, if you'd like. Laura, any comments for the board? Okay. Well, we will move forward. Payment of the bills, is there a motion to make payment of the bills?
I'll make that motion.
A motion on the table to make payment of the bills, is there support? Or it's been moved and supported, further discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Clerk Colavich, yes. Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Foley.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward to the minutes of June 14th, 2022, a regular scheduled meeting, is there any corrections to the minutes as presented or a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I'll make that motion.
A motion on the table to approve the minutes as presented, is there support?
Or?
It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes of June 14th, 2022 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed to say. Moving into correspondence, we have three items, two of which are from FERC. And then also, we have the minutes of the planning commission meeting from June 13th, 2022. Is there a motion to receive and file those?
Make a motion.
We have a motion to receive and file and support further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of receiving and filing the correspondence as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed to say. No old business, which brings us right to new business number uno. Insurance proposal. You want to?
We put out an RFP, we only got the response was from Lappin Agency, their proposal is in everybody's board packet.
We had a second company, yeah. We have two representatives from the Sterling Lappin group. And then we had Opina Agency said that they wouldn't have enough time to submit. So, we shut them up.
There was nobody else submitted?
No.
Who did we send it out to?
Two people, really, is I guess what it came down to. Lappin, and then I called. Post, following that board meeting, I reached out to the other organization. And then I heard back from Mr. Wilson saying that they didn't have enough time to put together a proposal. So, we have two representatives from the Lappin Agency. Do we have any questions to the proposal? Could you turn your microphone on? Sorry. Yeah, and Michelle.
I wondered about umbrella coverage, do, is that appropriate for us? Have we had it in the past?
And if you'd like to, if one of you guys would like to step to the podium, that way, anybody that is online can actually hear. You can take the microphone back to the seat if you'd like to.
Emptying break. There hasn't been umbrella coverage in the past, isn't on the policy now. But if you're interested, we can look at getting a full additional premium.
What would that do for us? I mean, I have it on my own, I don't even know.
Well, an umbrella acts like, kind of like a regular umbrella, it goes over your other policies. So, say, it would cover under, over your autos.
Access liability.
Liability, your, you know, any property liability that you would have. So, you know, you got sued and the judgment was for more than what your general liability limits are, then you have your umbrella to provide extra.
It's mostly for liability, not cash.
It is for liability, that's.
And so, it wouldn't, it would just be for excess?
Yes.
It's not for deductibles or anything like that, cash.
No, no, just liability.
So.
We currently have three million.
For your aggregate?
No, that's an occurrence.
Occurrence, our aggregate is five million.
Okay.
I'm gonna, as you guys know, I'm pretty, I used to be rather involved with this program. And, and I can tell you that the, the program, Janine is accurate in what an umbrella is. But this particular program writes all of it within the limit of liability. So, in other words, if you, if you wanted a six million dollar limit, the occurrence limit would be six million. There wouldn't be a buffer, if you will, or a gap in coverage between a primary policy and an umbrella policy. Years ago, they did away with that. So, we would just go up to ten million dollars.
And I guess, just in the spirit of conversation, obviously, as a municipality, we have a lot of inherent protections to begin. I see that the highest probability of liability is, would actually be with contracts with our subcontractors, as a potential of which, we've defined those contracts quite well.
Right.
So that we actually, that would be in contractual basis, many umbrellas to us as the primary entity. So, I guess, do we, are we concerned?
You're talking about, you're talking about like F and V as.
F and V, every, every subcontractor that were named as an additional insurer takes that liability off our hands, so to speak. So, I guess, a lot of our, if you want to say, higher risk activities have secondary protection mechanisms within the contract. Am I correct in that?
Absolutely, yeah. Those, those contracts, if we take a look at, for example, F and V, there is some very specific language in that policy, which would, or that contract, that would make us excess of anything that would go wrong from F and V standpoint, with a caveat. If, if we were the negligent party as a township, then we would be primary. Then, of course, we have some protections under the law there. But for all practical purposes, F and V would be the primary source of liability. And that would, that would hold true with just about any contract that we have.
Yeah, yeah.
I also had a question on the machinery and equipment coverage. Under, it says number four under that. Am I reading there? What is the amount there of limit? Is that sixteen?
Let me go back.
Here.
I want to change.
Page, oh, that's a whole different issue.
Page nine.
I guess it's nine on your, yeah. I was reading that. Sixteen million, one hundred ninety-three, one sixty-five?
Yeah, that's the limit of all of your equipment that we have listed on the policy total.
Every placement cost?
Don't believe it's replacement cost. Believe it's actual cash value.
And within.
The cost of that coverage, just that coverage alone, do you have that broken out or somewhere?
I can get that for you, but I don't have it broken out here.
And I, and I will say that going through this process, especially looking at our, our assets, Michelle and I went through and actually, actually updated a lot of inherent values that were previously unreaddressed, shall we say, so we, we strengthened those values as well.
But if there is that cash flow as opposed to replacement cost, what does that do for us?
It, it would actually be neutral. I'm sorry to jump in, Janine, but, but in the, take a great example. Around here would be a lift station that goes bad. They can be very expensive to, to replace. And so, that would be an example of what machinery and equipment would cover. The boiler system here, the heating plant here.
Permanently, permanently affixed versus movable was the very.
You got.
Inland marine versus.
Computers under that.
That, that's a separate coverage.
Oh, electronic equipment, including circuit boards and computer, number three.
Yeah, but you all, there's also, I think on another page, there's specific computer coverage too. ED, electronic data coverage.
Yeah, and some of, and that may be a misnote, because some of the things that are on one pop, like, we have a server room, so that's not movable. I don't, I don't know exactly what you're looking at. I know that there were some servers on the list that we actually had to look into.
Well, computer is a different kind of day, server, they're both computers, but, but this is, doesn't say server, it says computer. I just want, um, the is there any trouble that, that we should have replacement cost coverage?
It is replacement cost coverage.
What is?
It absolutely is.
On the inland marine?
On the inland marine, it would be a limited liability, with the exception of the fire trucks, they can be written for replacement cost.
Well, it's machinery and equipment coverage, then, Steve, is it, is there a reinstatement fee if you have a claim? Reinstatement cost, to get the coverage back to same level? That's, some of the machinery and equipment coveragees I've looked at have reinstatement requirements where you don't have full coverage.
Yeah, it's a little bit different, it's a little bit different terminology, and usually, that's found in liability. So, no, the, the limit doesn't exhaust, if that's what you mean. So, if you had like a million dollar claim, and if you had sixteen million dollars in coverage, it doesn't mean now you have fifteen million dollars in coverage. And even if you did, it would be aggregated annually. So, the chances of running out of, of coverage would be very, very low.
I'm in the process of messing with machinery and equipment coverage itself, so.
So, you're trying to do a little homework.
So, yeah, so, you know, I've seen that language in it, in it, like, okay, so I do, I do love, see that here.
Any other questions from either of our representatives here in regards to the proposal? Russ, did he have?
No, I have nothing.
Uh, at this point in time, I've entertained a motion to move forward with the proposal that was presented.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion on the table, is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Foley.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Colavich, yes. Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward, huh? And, and Ms. Brink, Russ may need your number afterwards, he's got. Sounds like he's working on machinery.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving forward in the agenda is, we're gonna be starting my whereas presentations. So, this, next item of business is a resolution to set an alternate date for the July border review. Whereas, section fifty-three B of the General Property Tax Code, MCL two eleven point five-three B, requires a border review that meets in July to meet on the Tuesday following the third Monday in July, and a border review that meets in December to meet on the Tuesday following the second Monday in December. And whereas assessors who work for multiple units of government are not always able to attend the border review meeting for each unit when they meet on the same day, and whereas Public Act one twenty-two of two thousand eight, effective May ninth, two thousand eight, allows an alternate July border review meeting date during the week of the third Monday in July, and an alternate December border review meeting date during the, the week of the second Monday of December. And whereas it will benefit the residents of the Charter Township of Elpino to have the assessor available to assist the border review and taxpayers in processing tax appeals and poverty exemptions. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the local unit, the Charter Township of Elpino, may schedule these aforementioned meetings during the week of the third Monday of July and the week of the second Monday of December, as allowed by Public Act one twenty-two of two thousand eight. Is there a motion to that effect? And
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion.
I'll support it.
Motion and support to the resolution to set an alternate date for the July and December border review. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Foley.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Colavich, yes. Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. And then you're me, I'm just making notes there. Okay. Third item of new business, the resolution to set an alternate date for the March border review. Whereas, twenty eighteen, Public Act six sixty, MCL two eleven point one zero G, the act provides that the State Tax Commission shall adopt and publish guidelines applicable to a municipal audit procedures. And whereas the State Tax Commission has in turn adopted such guidelines, STC guideline twenty twenty dash one, the guidelines as required by the act. And whereas the guidelines provide that each assessing district must have and follow a published policy under which its assessor's office is reasonably accessible to taxpayers, and that the published policy must address the items listed in section ten G subsection one of the act. And whereas, the Charter Township of Elpino desires to comply with the requirement to establish such a policy by adopting the present resolution and making the resolution available to the public. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Charter Township of Elpino establishes the following policy and provides the following information in connection with its assessor's office. The Charter Township of Elpino currently employs an assessor of record that is certified by the state of Michigan as a Michigan Advanced Assessing Officer, an MAAO certification number R dash seven eight six two. The Charter Township of Elpino uses state of Michigan approved BSNA KAMA software, assessing software. Contact information is there below. And the Charter Township of Elpino employs Ellen Berg as the assessor of record, and the contact information for this assessor is as follows. Is there a motion to move forward with the resolution as read? Actually, no, I would ask you, yes, please, yes. I did not even catch that one, it stuck to the first one. The assessor contact information can also be found by accessing the Charter Township of Elpino website as listed, or the assessor's website as listed. The Charter Township of Elpino ensures that any taxpayer inquiring about property records maintained by the assessor's office within the Charter Township of Elpino will have a response from the assessor of record within seven business days from the date request was submitted to the above listed assessor, either by telephone or electronic mail using the assessor contact information listed above. Taxpayers may request a meeting with the assessor from the Charter Township of Elpino for any property assessment related inquiries by submitting and writing to the above electronic mail address or contacting by telephone the assessor for the Charter Township of Elpino. Taxpayers may request using the above electronic mail or telephone number to inspect the records maintained by the assessor's office. And taxpayers will be contacted to set up a time and date to meet at the Charter Township of Elpino offices located at four three eight five US twenty-three North, Elpino, Michigan, four nine seven zero seven. Taxpayers may request using the above electronic mail or telephone number, any questions or processes, processes the assessor uses to informally hear and resolve any dispute taxpayers may have before the March border review meeting. Be it for the result that this resolution policy shall take effect as the date set forth below. Is there a motion to this resolution?
So, move.
We have a, we have, we have a motion on the table, is there support?
Support.
Support by trustee Foley, further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Clerk Colavich, yes. Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Foley.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Number four.
Did you do this one?
Yeah, I didn't see that one.
You skipped.
You skipped number.
Three.
Three, yeah.
Three?
Yeah, you did four.
The March one.
Oh, my goodness.
You started reading, right?
I got, got my resolutions.
You, let's resolve to do.
Let's resolve, let's resolve to do another resolution, shall we? Whereas, I will pay attention to all the resolutions that I obviously jumbled up, so which one?
March border.
Okay.
Right here.
Yeah, let me just read it from here. It was just short, it seemed like it wasn't that, I have it. Okay, apologies. Moving forward with this resolution, at a regular meeting, properly notice the Board of Trustees. Whereas, section two eleven point three zero of the General Property Tax Act, MCL two eleven point five-three B, requires a border review, review which meets in March, to meet on the second Monday in March. And whereas, MCL two eleven point three zero subsection two allows an alternate March border review meeting date during the week of the second Monday in March, which alternative starting date shall be the Tuesday or Wednesday following the second Monday of March. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the local unit, the Charter Township of Elpino, may schedule these aforementioned meetings on either the second Monday in March or the Tuesday or Wednesday following the second Monday of March. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the table, is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, further discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Colavich, yes. Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Foley.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Okay. Second to last resolution of the this is a twenty twenty-two resolution for poverty exemption. Whereas, the adoption of guidelines for poverty exemptions is required by, of the Charter Township of Elpino Board of Trustees. And whereas, the principal residence of persons who the township supervisor slash assessor and border review determine by reason of poverty to be unable to contribute to the public charge is eligible for exemption in whole or in part from the taxation under Public Act three ninety of nineteen ninety-four. Michigan combined law to eleven point seven subsection U. And whereas pursuant to Public Act three ninety of nineteen ninety-four, the Charter Township of Elpino adopts the following guidelines for the border review to implement. The guidelines shall include, but not be limited to the specific income and asset levels of the claimant and all persons residing in the household, including any property tax credit returns filed in the current or immediately preceding year. To be eligible, a person shall do the following on an annual basis. One, be an owner of and occupy as a principal residence the property for which an exemption is requested. Two, file a claim with the township supervisor, assessor, or, or review accompanied by state and federal income tax returns for all persons residing in the principal residence, including any property tax credit returns filed in the immediately preceding year or in the current year. Three, file a claim reporting that the combined assets of all persons do not exceed the current guidelines. Assets included but are not limited to real estate, other than the principal residence, personal property, motor vehicles, recreational vehicles and equipment, certificates of deposit, savings account, checking as account, stocks, bonds, life insurance, retirement funds, et cetera. Number four, produce a valid driver's license or other form of identification. Five, produce, if requested, a deed, land contract, or other evidence of ownership of the property for which an exemption is requested. Six, meet the federal, federal property income guidelines as defined and determined annually by the United States Department of Health and Human Services, or alternate, alternative guidelines adopted by the governing body, providing the alternative guidelines do not provide ineligible, ineligibility requirements less than the federal guidelines. Seven, the application for the exemption shall be filed after January one, but one day prior to the last day of the border review. The filing of this claim constitutes an appearance before the border review for the purpose of preserving the right to appeal to the Michigan Tax Tribunal. The following are the federal property got, income guidelines, which are updated annually by the United States Department of Health and Human Services. The annual allowable income includes income for all persons residing in the principal residence. As you'll see in the, the graph, one through eight persons. Each additional person after eight is for thousand five hundred and forty dollars. The following is a limit on the amount of assets an applicant in the house. Limits on cash balances, twenty-five hundred checking and savings, all bank statements must be submitted with application. One personal vehicle exempt for all overall asset value limit. Primary residence is excluded, however, access land over five acres will be counted towards overall asset limit. Annual dividend income taxable and non taxable must be less than one thousand dollars. Overall asset value limit, twenty thousand dollars. Now, therefore, be it hereby resolved that the township supervisor, assessor, and border review shall follow the above stated policy and federal guidelines in granting or denying an exemption unless the township supervisor, assessor, and border review determine there are substantial and compelling reasons why there should be a deviation from the policy and federal guidelines, and a partial exemption of fifty percent or twenty-five percent may be considered per MCL two eleven point seven subsection U subsections five B. Any partial exemptions deviations from these guidelines shall be documented by the border review in each instance. Is there a motion to that effect?
Yes, I mean.
We, we have a motion to move forward with the resolution for property exemption, is there support?
Support.
Been moved and supported, further discussion?
Maybe under the first whereas, it says just Charter Township, you, you actually read in of Elpino.
Yeah, I did.
I don't know if it's germane, if not, I won't worry about it either.
I, I wouldn't, but I, I think I, whereas, I just threw it in.
Yeah.
Since I'm skipping around, um, yeah, it would be, I guess, fairly germane at this point. Because it starts out saying that, it was announced at the Charter Township of Elpino on the twenty-seventh day of June. So, it's noted though, further discussion? Roll call, please.
So, just, do we want that corrected?
We could correct it with that, if, if, with the motion, might as well, everything else is.
The motion is to guard that.
Okay, yeah. Are you friendly with that amendment to the motion?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And the supporter, you're from, that you're good with that? Roll call, if there's no further discussion.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Foley.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Colavich, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. One of the resolutions, could we have established a policy, that was it?
No, the next one's the very last. You got through the force.
Oh.
Yeah, you did it.
Oh, I did, okay.
We're done.
Well, not yet. Don't, don't count me out with the resolutions, yeah. No, the next item of business is the John's Electric quote. This is a, the second part of a quote that we've already approved, and that was from Graham Generator. For all the parts to have our generator on campus.
So, we've already received the quote for a switch, or whatever.
We have, we already approved that. That was the, the whole kent and kaboodle we approved, I believe, two meetings ago. And I believe you made the motion to focus those monies.
I thought I remembered us talking about this, and that's why I was surprised.
So, this was, this is the missing link, we finally got the electrical. Um, oh, Omega wanted to put in a quote, he didn't have time. Obviously, he just had enough time to get us the lighting quote. Um, so, it'd be my recommendation, because we have, since our last board meeting, had another power event due to lightning strikes out of here, where we lost a little hour, hour, hour and a half of productivity.
It was an hour and a half based on knowing that my employer was out.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. So, it'd be my recommendation to move forward with the quote provided by John's Electric for three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, that is all the labor to put in the four hundred amp manual transfer switch with the new automatic switch provided, of which we have already purchased.
That means it kicks in.
We don't, we don't have to put a fingerprint on it. We lose power, one one thousand, two one thousand, I think up to ten. Power.
Does it have?
I think three.
I know we'll go into discussion. Does this have anything to do with, or could it create any kind of a, either a low power or, or surge that would impact the computers?
So, so part of, so part of this was they, they look and actually make determinations based on load. So this is all part of a calculation. He sat with Frank Rosinsky, our electrical inspector as well and looked at every panel, what was attached to that panel, how much load, how, I mean, they, it wasn't just, yeah, we can do it. This is, they look at what our usage is and if they actually had to have brownouts due to in levels of importance inherent. But we actually as an entire department, entire building can have every light on and everything and that generator will take the load.
All right, because I was just concerned about, you, you mentioned lightning and lightning is sort of notorious for blowing out computers because they, because the power up, down, up, you know, the sort of.
So we have, we have, now if we move forward with this, we'll have three layers of redundancy. Every, just about every principal computer, not every computer here has a battery backup. But then our servers have a battery backup and that's great, but that battery backup is a ten minute window on our servers. And so right now, we wouldn't have any problem because we have overlap every which way. But I believe that this, I think when I was talking with Mike Graham from Graham Electric, this system will kick on usually in seconds, if not just a couple minutes.
All right, well, I just, like I said, the, the surge protector, what is the one that was?
Yeah, we have surge protection on our servers. We've learned that lesson from a lightning strike previous. Oh, they have to calculate gas load, but somewhere right in the realm of eighteen to twenty seven hours. On with a full load.
And that's a, this diesel power or?
This is a diesel power unit. I actually asked Mr. Graham with his decades of experience if it were something that would be, because the generator we have on campus was, I believe, a federal hand down through the Rose Lake MDNR office. And he said, you can't buy a new generator built as well as that one, except for they put in the world's worst wiring harness. So this will kind of alleviate that. This will take away any human interaction during a down power activity. And that's, that's the best. So I.
Oh, cover says an emergency center.
And yes, thank you, because we are an emergency shelter. And so we have to have power. So I would entertain a motion to, and we can believe we can, we have enough money right now. If somebody wants to make a motor, we already believe that the first motion was specified to the utilization of ARPA monies. If that's how this wants to, because it would be one project, I, my, my suggestion would be to mirror that because three quarters of the cost of this project was already.
Could I ask you to remind me what I, what we authorized for the parts so that we know what the total is?
Oh, roughly trying to remember. It was high. It was surprisingly high. I, I, I don't have it on top of my head right now.
I have a spreadsheet with what we allocated to ARPA monies. I can get that to you after the meeting.
Okay.
I think it's still a relatively low percentage, isn't it?
Right now, yeah. I mean, we've, we've talked about some projects that obviously would be quite encompassing. But right now, our, our true actually motions that have allocations directly tied, I think we're only at two or three smaller. This would be potentially the fourth, which would be combined to the third, which was the first part.
We're still working with the first half of the ARPA money, including the power repair.
And we haven't touched that any cost. We've only divvied out, I believe, the sixty five hundred dollars for the Dixon Engineering Phase One. And I don't think that that had a stipulation as to ARPA distribution. So yeah, we haven't, we're not, we don't need to be on any major rush to spend that money. But I do believe that the parts and all the materials previous to this quote were under the contingent of ARPA utilization. Is there a motion on the table to move forward with the?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table to move forward with the quote presented by John's Electric for three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
Being funded by ARPA.
I was just gonna say, I was just gonna add to the funded by the ARPA money.
Okay. It's been moved and supported. Further discussion? I'm excited about this. I almost pulled the tri- executive trigger last week when we lost power. But cooler head said it's only a couple more days.
Keep you running though?
What?
From a business standpoint, did the battery backups keep you going to that hour and a half?
No, we only have ten, we only have ten minutes.
Is that right?
So you had to shut down.
Do have battery backup, not in my office.
Kelly's only.
Laura's does.
Laura's Kelly's and maybe Lynn's. I don't, not all computers. So I mean, this will be the, our umbrella.
Yeah.
We have overlap at, in the tune of minutes, including an emergency light. That does work. We confirm that for thirty minutes. So this will be before that battery wears out, we'll have power restored, no matter what. So. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Paulie.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Sir Kalavich, yes. Supervisor Skitty.
Yes. Moving forward in the agenda, our next item of business is a full on application solely for adult use and or medical marijuana's licenses that we've moved forward with. This will, instead of me asking five hundred questions and documenting through the process, this is in addition to the, the typical planning commission application. Denise Klein did this. So it hits everything that we needed to hit. And that way we can be on one plane and it's very similar to also that of the cities. But obviously, this, this covers every license that's allowable. And it will just help our internal paper keeping with this new, new commercial use. So it'd be my recommendation to approve the application for medical marijuana facility and or adult use or marijuana establishment license. Application. We have a motion on the table to move forward with the application for marijuana facilities. Is there a support?
I support.
We have a motion and support. Further discussion?
Under the adult use marijuana establishment. I thought we had, and maybe this is just a generic form.
Remove micro business?
Yes.
We did. This is a generic.
Okay, fair enough. And then also, is, is this and other applications available in a, in a, like a word document on our, on our website so that somebody could fill it in there?
Yep, they're all in PDF fillable.
Excellent, excellent.
Not yet.
I mean, it will.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yep. Yeah, so that's building any permits. We tried to come into the twenty first century. Okay, we have a motion and support.
On Steve's point, should we remove that part then of the thing for micro businesses or will it?
We can.
Cause confusion?
Honestly, Russ, I don't think you, you could be that high to miss check that box.
It could be that high to check that box?
Yeah, did he like? Yeah, well, right, right, right now, the, the planning commission and the board of trustees have removed the micro business of which I have taken two calls, rather fairly in vigorous calls that of individuals that wanted to go that way. I said, come to the board meetings. Tell us, give us your pitch. So yeah, if we want to remove that, that was just a snap. I was just trying to get this before the board so that we can implement.
Changes down the road, we decide that, right, we can do that.
Well, I was just gonna make the same comment.
I mean, I'll do whatever you guys want.
I'm sure there's sections in here that.
It is overlay. It covers every base.
Yeah.
So I, I prefer, I mean, we can remove it. We don't offer it. So.
I just didn't want somebody to be confused and fill out that whole owner's thing and then.
Yeah, no, I don't think that there's a, a lot of confusion with the individuals and the companies that represent this market. Their, their lawyers are pretty on top of filling out this paperwork pretty, pretty well. No, I just, I, I, I'm fine with. So we have a motion then. Any other discussion? Saying none? No, we don't need that. Roll call. All those in favor of approving the application signify by saying aye. Oppose the same. Okay, thank you. Okay, we also have. And it was in the thirteenth hour, this was an update to a quote that we got late last year and trustee Crawl worked on. I believe we have, so there's a couple things in the present, have the writer. So the, the first, second page of that packet that you would have before you. The reason that we're looking at those lights, that is a Michigan based company and their timelines are fairly short, the Lumicon. And plus, it's a Michigan based company. All LEDs, all cost efficient, the ballards are better designed and actually more cost effective than they were last year, which I don't know how that is. But this is a quote, obviously also with the reduction of one insurance claim in that stretch. The quote cost of sixty seven thousand five hundred and fifty eight dollars and fifty cents is, I think, less than two thousand dollars increased from the previous quote. So that could, this been a swing and then given market.
I'm seeing two kinds of lights here. You're talking about the Lumicon.
Lumicon are, would be the taller. So on, on the thirty two corridor, we have both ballards and traditional street lighting.
Yeah.
This meets all M dot standards. But the Lumicon would be the taller light.
So are we, are we doing way with the lower ones then?
No, the lower ones are the second page.
Okay, so we're doing both.
We're still doing both. This is a light for light replacement cost right here. Everything that's there right now to put in brand new lights and all work is.
Except cash was explained to me that the, what do you call them? Lower lights, the sea lights, whatever, that they are better constructed than the ones we have in terms of.
Well, right, right now, everything's better constructed. Can I just shorten that? Get less, everything that's on this paper is better than what was put in ground when I was first put in.
I just suppose anything is vandal.
Well, we've all learned the lesson that fiberglass light poles do not hold up well to Ford F one fifties at approximately fifty, fifty, sixty miles an hour, nor do church fences, benches, et cetera.
But I thought we also had some.
Well, the wear and tear.
Vandalism or some sort of vandalism.
Well, we never did. I, I tried to find a police report to another scenario. And it just absconded. So I don't know if there's.
Because we had a report, I think, I think it was in the news actually of, of kids, somebody breaking lights along the path after they were.
I haven't seen that.
Like, I, that's recollection. This is before I was on the board.
You wouldn't notice it anyways.
Yeah, then, then they're coming, they're coming in with headlamps because only about, actually, I was just out there today and I'm like, well, that light works because it was on in the middle of the day. But this is, like I said, a light for light replacer. What is going to be replaced, it may not be blue, it's going to be black. But the quality is better. We have Michigan companies. We don't have any fiberglass. We don't, we have all LED bulbs, so energy efficient. And the Lumicon housing won't become a fishbowl because right now the lights that are out there actually catch all water.
That's what he was telling me.
So, not electrician, but I'm pretty certain that water and electricity.
Well, then, can you explain what you're proposing for funding?
Uh, well, this, uh, right now, this would also be a potential that we could utilize ARPA monies on. I don't, I, I looked at the board. I don't want to just be quick on the trigger of utilization of ARPA monies. But this is a, a wide ranging public process that I think would be, right now, we, we've focused a lot internally in terms of ARPA utilization. But this would be one expenditure that would be a greater community use of an existing bypath. So.
So and I, and personally, I've taken a lot of complaints from citizens because if you go out there at night, I mean, it is, you gotta like, the one night I counted seven lights out of the whole thing that are working. It's just an eyesore. I mean, even from an economic development standpoint.
Yeah.
It's not welcoming.
No.
Dark when you come in.
No, I, I, I would like to move forward.
So the one thing that I, the, the comment that I would make on the lower.
The baller?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So when I, I've driven there at night when those are all on. And I was gonna say it was back when the earth was cooling. And those lights were not LED type lights and they shine bright, right into your, right into your eyes. They're, they're, they're at an odd little height.
Yeah.
And so we know this is an issue with other people because all along Washington Avenue where the city put those all in, that's, that's been one of their big complaints. So their answer was to just shut them off. So seems to me that there must be, the idea, I would guess, is not to illuminate my eyes as I'm going by there, but to illuminate the sidewalk. So I'm wondering if there's some sort of a design, because I would imagine these LEDs are going to be much brighter.
Yep. So you, you're, you're a hundred and ten percent right. So those were actually metal halide. Bright light, blue base light, super bright, direct intensity. This ballard system, actually, the, the LED doesn't have any direct exposure to eye. It's in the head. And then it hits a cone. So it disperses it down and out. So it has, it's not a direct, yeah, because LEDs are bright. So this is actually low consumption, top down, hits that cone and disperses.
Basically disperses to the ground.
Yeah.
Well, that's good to hear because that, that's, that's been more than one time when I've gone through there, I'm like, why these are so bright.
Yeah.
So the maintenance wise, what, what are you supposed to maintain on these things? The reason why I'm asking the question is because I'm concerned about using ARPA money that at some future date won't be there. And now we've got all this maintenance that we have to deal with.
The Lumicon actually have warranty.
Okay.
So that's, that's actually a good thing within, there's not a lot of warranty in lighting. And it would be the second page, that the principal company. Um, they actually, I want to say, Ryan, they got a private. Yeah, so, yeah. The poles are metal, I mean, this would be a, a maintenance concern probably fifteen years out. They should be pretty much plug and play for at least fifteen years. So.
And these are LED as well up there on the, on those? Are those LEDs? No, no, on this.
Yes, both are all LED. So our energy consumption, and actually, the, the lights that were originally put in were not LED because there was still cooling. They tried to retrofit those lights with LED bulbs, which got us a few more years. But then the issue was still a faulty design that they were a fishbowl. And then we also found out that all the, the principal poles were fiberglass and fiberglass breaks down under UV. So it's just beyond more and more brittle. And then that's probably the only reason a Ford F one fifty could drive through.
I could drive through all of them.
Please don't. Well, actually, right now, please do.
I take it this seventy six hundred dollars is sitting in a fund somewhere?
That would be a question for Laura, but I would assume that, that Hobbly just got put into general.
But we've been compensated. So.
We, we did get the seventy five.
So, so, okay, all right, okay, all right.
So I'd entertain a motion at this point in time to move forward with light replacement.
I'll make that motion.
A motion? We have a motion on the table and support. Further discussion? Um, I will add to the further discussion part of this. Part of this component are the benches. I'm actually, the reason that it's not on is because I spoke with Steve Plowman. Actually, on Friday. And he's gonna, a, a cost to repaint would be three hundred dollars a bench. So we're going to be moving forward, starting this week of pulling a bench, having it media blasted, primed. He does a two stage coat, I think that blue. That would be, I guess, I, if, if there's any recommendations from the board, if we just want to go kaleidoscope of colors or do we want to go monochromatic? But the, the fact of the matter is, one at a time, those benches are going to be pulled, primed, painted, replaced. Soon as one's down, another one's gone.
But they're the, they're the metal with the fiberglass?
No, they're all, they're solid metal. We actually. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, I would be in favor of continuing with blue.
I mean, I know.
You're gonna have black lights.
Black lights.
Black and blue.
Yeah. Talk about welcoming to a community, black.
Are these gonna be that, what do they call that bunny paint that they put on?
Electrostatic.
Well, it's something along that line.
I know, so. This is actually, actually, if you look at. The, the first, the first bench right on the corner of Bagley at right in front of Walgreens. Is, actually, I believe Steve said that, that was MSP blue. You got a good deal on it? But anyways, that, that would be the color, just a nice, bright darker blue.
I'm trying to think what my wife had some novel thing in our yard painted and it was very expensive, but it was supposed to last for long.
It's probably what's called electrostatic painting.
No, he doesn't do, it's not. This is a two, two part base, like automotive enamel.
Okay.
And then he does a clear coat over the enamel to help with UV damage, so. And the cost per bench is three hundred dollars, so that's my, my plan is, I'm gonna have. I, I don't have, I wrote it down the other day.
So are you gonna bring a quote or something to us?
At three, I'm not gonna just do it at one at a time cuz he doesn't have the capacity to pull.
What are we gonna do with those couple that are completely shot? Cuz there are some that are.
Well, we have a one brand new one that's going out too, so that's gonna speed up the process, so we have one where it was shot. Another one that we don't have a police report, so how can we even file a claim? We may have to just bite that, but I still have costs coming in from that company.
Cuz we have vandalism, we can make the police report. We don't have to wait for a car accident report.
Okay. Well, I don't know if it was vandalism. That one, actually, another car hit. We had, we had a law enforcement agent bring it to my attention, and then after a trip to the state police post. We don't have any record of that.
Jeez, I'm surprised there's not a camera somewhere.
Well.
So I wonder how many of those vandalisms and those sorts of things took.
I guess, could you, could you look into that? Cuz I haven't, I mean, I don't read our, our paper, but.
What do you want me to look into?
Into this vandalism.
Yeah, you mean coverage or?
No, I'm just saying, I mean, cuz I haven't seen this vandalism. For say, towards lights or benches. It's just been two bad drivers.
Okay. Well, but the point is, I mean, we can report an accident if nobody else has. We have some evidence that a car hit it and they ran off and there's a hit and run, we can still report, hey, somebody hit our bench, it's broke. You know, so we can make that report. Right, you agree?
Somebody was on site. You wanna make that report? Make that report. So anyways, that was this discussion because. It's a two prong approach. The lighting is, is. In desperate need of repair. The benches are just gonna be a static thing. I would, I could get a quote at three hundred dollars per and say this is the total, but they don't have the capacity to do it all at one time. This, one at a time as they rotate.
And this is Plowman's.
Yeah, he's offered to do it. He's actually wants us to get another bench pole so he can start on it right now.
Yeah, they'll just fit it in between their other work and, and.
He, he reached out to me wanting to do it, and I said.
That's cool.
What is a cost? And three hundred dollars a bench, I said, then this is how we're gonna do it. I'll get you a bench, we'll put one in, soon as that's done, you're gonna take another one. And just keep it. Oh, yeah.
Is he gonna pick him up and hang him back?
I, I'll, I'll make some of those. Sometimes he'll have the ability if one of his guys is there, but I didn't solely put that on him.
Those are obviously bolted into the concrete.
Yeah.
I would just make sure that we have something that was a caution tape or something there, so that somebody doesn't.
Stub a toe.
Stub a toe or worse.
Yeah, nope, noted. So we have a motion, we have support. To moving forward with the Omega quote for the M thirty two corridor lighting. Any further discussion?
Using our.
With the utilization of ARPA funds, thank you for the clarification. Seeing no further discussion.
Trustee Paul.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Blavich, yes. Trustee Crowe.
Yes.
Trustee Ryder.
Yes. Yes. Moving forward in the agenda, on number nine. The resolution adopting a final project plan for the water system improvements and designating an authorized project representative. Whereas the Charter Township of Elpena recognizes the need to make improvements to its existing water storage and distribution system and. Whereas the Charter Township of Elpena authorized Fleson Vandenberg. The Charter Township of Elpena's consulting engineering firm to prepare a project plan which recommends the construction of the following. Replacement water service services system wide from the main to the road right away approximately two thousand five hundred and fifty two services. Replace an undersized and aged water main approximately four thousand four hundred and fifty linear feet. Loop existing distribution system approximately thirty four hundred linear feet. Water tower repair, upgrade and painting that is on the twenty three south water tower. The water amp, which is asset management plan programming and DSMI and amp equipment. Whereas said project plan was presented at a public hearing held July or June fourteenth, twenty twenty two. And all public comments have been considered and addressed. Now therefore be it resolved that the Charter Township of Elpena formally adopts said project plan. And agrees to implement the selected alternative, alternate, alternative three as follows. Replace water ser- services system wide from the main to the road right away approximately two thousand five hundred and fifty two services. Replace undersized and aged water main approximately four thousand four hundred and fifty linear feet. Loop existing distribution system approximately thirty four hundred linear feet. Water tower repair, upgrade and painting, water amp programming and DSMI amp equipment. Be it further resolved that the Charter Township of Elpena supervisor, a position currently held by Nathan W. Skibby. Is designated as authorized representative for all activities associated with the project referenced above, including. The summing up said project plan as a first step in applying to the state of Michigan for the drinking water state revolving fund loan. To assist in the implementation of the selected alternative. Is there a motion to this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Of a motion, motion and support. Further discussion?
I have just one question. You, you identified the meaning of AMP, but what is DSMI?
I know that, that, I was like, please don't ask a question. I can't. I have so many acronyms. I'll get it, yeah. And, yeah, it's just, so what it is, is that is. They had equipment built in as a small part of the expenditure so that we don't have to outsource. Certain functions for locating services and it's basically mapping. Yeah, this is just.
Camera thing or something?
Yep, to camera, to map, to document. That way we don't have to always have to downstream, have to use a third party.
And this is all contingent. I mean, this is, as it says, the step to start the long process.
Yeah, and we're well in that process, so. Yeah. Any other discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Blavich, yes. Trustee Crowe.
Yes.
Trustee Ryder.
Yes.
Trustee Paul.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. That concludes the new business on our agenda. This is the second opportunity for public comment. If there's any public comment online. I saw that you were texting earlier. Laura, have you figured out your? Audio? Okay. Okay. Laura, can you hear us? I know you can. We can hear you though. Okay. Okay, well, I hope you feel better. Moving forward from public comment to discussion, is there anything else for the good of the order? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion or a motion to adjourn. We have a motion on the table to adjourn. Is there support? Or it's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? No, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. I oppose the same. Meeting adjourned at seven o'clock. Thank you very much.